Monday night.
I have reservations Monday.
Ready folks, I think.
Are you ready?
I'm in that.
Yep.
Okay, I'll call this town of Isle Haven Board of Selectmen's meeting to order for Thursday, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Roll call is Tom Anthony, Don Young, Leslie Dyer, myself, Elizabeth Bunker, and Marjorie Stratton. And I did not ask, but do we have, didn't have any additions, correct?
Just that if you want to add that correspondence from. Yeah, okay.
I mean, it doesn't matter. Do you want me to or?
It's uh. It's really up to you.
All right.
It's really up to you. It was addressed to the board, so I brought it to your attention.
Okay, did you have that here?
I handed it back over.
Yeah, the letter. I gave it.
Tom read it and then he handed it back. Where'd it go?
Um, anyway, um, I'll just put that under communications. So I don't have to add.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, number two, approve agenda.
They'll move.
On favor. Number three minutes, approve the minutes from the May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-four and June fourth, two thousand and twenty-four meetings. Second. Approve and sign treasures warrants, number fifty.
Oh, we don't have.
Oh, we already did that. You already did that.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Yep, that's right. Um, strike that. Number five, communications.
Uh, we received a letter from Lawrence J. Larry Steers. Uh, he just wanted to let the selectman know that effective June eighteenth, he's retiring as executive chair of the Star Hope Foundation. Um, and he wrote a, yeah, a nice letter to the board. And if you haven't had an opportunity to read it, you might too.
Anyway. I already read it. So if you want to pass it, I mean, you can.
Sure.
You got it when you get a chance.
Yep. All right, speakers from the floor. Seeing none.
Good.
Don't all speak at once.
Yeah, really. Uh, number seven, committee and departmental reports and appointments. Seven A, Woodard and Curran. Um, you know, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Me?
No. Um. That is just the status report, correct?
Right. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Well, it is very forward.
Yep. So it means, uh, downtown project seven B. Gabe, I guess.
Hi, yes, I just. Hi, everyone. Yeah, I just wanted to check in and give, give, as you know, status report. Um. So, um. I think, I think when Brent was here last time, we, you know, we were in the midst of talking with folks about the parking lot. Uh, and I think we had some good conversations. Um, as I mentioned, when, uh, at the last meeting. Um, there's a lot to kind of sort out in terms of, you know, people's recommendations, preferences, suggestions. Um, there were a lot of questions about, you know, will elevating the parking lot cause problems for the adjacent property owners, meaning like all of a sudden we have a high elevation or a higher elevation? Is the water going to flow with more, uh, strength, vigor toward those other properties? Is that going to exacerbate flooding? Um, so there, there are some, I think legitimate questions out there. Sort of like, you know, if we're not elevating everything, uh, what is the impact of elevating one thing? And I think that's a good question. Um, and, you know, I'm not an engineer. I, 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 I haven't modeled that. But, you know, someone just sort of pointed out was like, well, when water flows with force and you put an object, it, that's higher than everything else, it pushes against that object and flows around it. I mean, that seems straightforward. Like I said, I'm not an engineer, so, um, I think we're trying to, you know, we're trying to ask the, um, the. I guess it would be the, the folks that do the like hydraulics and, and, um. And that's not, probably not the right word. Um, the hy- the hydrogeol- well, anyway, I'm not going to try to get, guess what that engineer is. There's one engineer that does the, does the water modeling. Um, and so, yeah, so anyway, um, there are also many questions that can, there are many, many responses that conflict because there isn't a clear vision or direction or, um, directive from the town in terms of use of the parking lots. So, meaning like, are we supposed to design more for one business versus the other? Or are we trying to accommodate all businesses in both parking lots? So I know there's been, you know, like, like some of the fishermen have said, you know, elevating impacts us. Um, because, you know, we can't, we're not going to be able to lift the traps up. Um, oh, you know, it's, it's going to be harder for us to do that. Um, and there isn't enough room at the fish plant wharf for everyone to use that who currently uses the downtown parking lot. Um, there's been just, you know, even from Jim himself, just the challenges of managing, um. You know, trap storage and the amount of time that traps are, are sitting there. Meaning when, when traps are sitting there, other people can't load and unload traps because there just isn't any space to do that. So I'm saying all of this because I have a list of feedback and a lot of it conflicts. You know, so our job, you know, or so I say, my job and then working with like Pam and Marjorie, um, and, and Brent is to take all of the feedback that we've gotten and try to move forward with the next iteration of the design. Um, so I think what's going to happen is, um, you know, I'm, I'm going to do that and we're going to talk about it at our Monday project meeting. But I'm saying this because I think either prior to the next version of the design or in response to the next version of the design, I think it's going to really behoove the select board to like look at the design and, you know, say like, is this, you know, is this what we want? You know, do, you know, or, or, you know, what are, are, are we supporting all businesses with these designs? Are we trying to support all businesses? Um, so I, I guess I just wanted to share all that because I don't think it's straightforward. Simply because, you know, we don't have, um, basically right now, we're just trying to accommodate everybody, which in my opinion is a great idea, but it means that, you know, we need to make sure that the fishermen are not impacted negatively in the downtown and the fish plant parking lot. We need to make sure that other businesses that use both parking lots are not impacted. We need to make sure the adjacent property owners aren't going to be impacted negatively. So there's just a lot of considerations and I, I think, you know, we are not going to be able to achieve all of our goals. Um, unless we, actually, that's probably not what I want to say. I was going to say unless we negatively impact somebody, but I just, I'm seeing the challenges of, of what we're trying to do with elevating. And, um, so I think, you know, we're going to have to have a conversation about some of the, the components and, you know, the decisions that we want to make about, about particularly the downtown parking lot, but.
Gabe, I have a question.
Yeah.
Would it make sense to put a lift in the town parking lot? Because they are elevating it eighteen inches? And a, a lift would help with that.
Uh, like a hoist.
A hoist, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that wasn't, that was suggested by some of the fishermen.
Sorry, Gabe.
Sorry.
Go ahead, say again.
No, I was just saying that was definitely suggested by some of the fishermen we spoke with that, you know, that could then alleviate the problem. I mean, it would just be one, one area where people could load and unload, but one area is better than, you know, no area. And, um, yeah, so I think if we're willing to, like, it would mean we would be specifically designating area in the downtown parking lot that is for commercial fishing. And I don't think, you know, we've, we've really kind of consciously done that yet. Other, you know, it's like we've, we, the area is available, but it's also available for whomever. So I think if the, if the, if the, like, if the select board wants to make that decision, like, we're going to, we're going to designate this particular area that there's going to be a hoist and it's going to be for commercial fishing, then that would certainly, I think, go a long way in supporting the fishermen that use that area, assuming that we're still elevating, um, the parking lot. I mean, I think if we end up realizing that it's going to negatively impact everybody around the parking lot. Um, by elevating it, we might want to make some different decisions than that, in which case, then that question of, you know, are fishermen going to be negatively impacted by elevating the parking lot, that kind of goes away. I'm not saying we're not going to elevate it. I'm just saying, I think we have some, some serious things to think about in terms of the impact of elevating it.
Okay. Any other questions for Gabe?
I do have one more thing, um, just related to funding, which is, I think I mentioned this before, but, um, we, we've just kind of looked at the various options for generating some more grant funds, um, to, you know, try to meet the need of the project, um, since it has come in, the phase one has come in over budget. So there is, um, I think I mentioned this before, a state, a one-time state opportunity that's actually pretty good. It's, it's going to be, um, you know, up to, there's up to four million dollars that you can apply for, for construction. Um, we are eligible to apply, um, it, it. You're not supposed to, well, anyway, I won't get into those details, but I, it, just talking through it, it seems like, you know, we can put together an application for kind of like what we need for phase one. Um, it is going to require a five percent match and Marjorie and I talked about this on, um, Friday. Oh, no, sorry, it is Friday. No, it's Thursday. Sorry, we talked about this yesterday, I think. Um, and, uh, there's, you know, assuming the budget passes on the twenty-sixth, um, there, there will be money in that resilience reserve that, that you set up and we could use that as the match. But that was assuming we are going to ask for one point five million and the way the budget is turning out, the five percent might be more than seventy-five thousand dollars. It might be like a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So I'm just putting that out there now because there may be, um, you know, a need to, to find, uh, some additional match, which I'm sorry to say that, um, but five percent really is a good opportunity. And if we were to get these funds, we could actually have them before the end of the summer, which is pretty amazing. Um, so anyway, um, I'm going to work on that. There's another opportunity through USDA that I think we might look at pursuing, which is a zero-match, uh, grant. It just might take a little longer to get the funds, but, um, anyway, just letting you know, those two things are out there. We are actively searching for more money. I can't believe I'm saying that because it seems like we've done that for a long time now. Um, but I'm just grateful there are still some pots of money out there that we might be able to access. So that's what I got. Thank you.
Thanks, Gabe.
Thanks, Gabe. Um, C, Public Works, and that is just to, um, go over.
Well, this is, this was an older report, right?
Yeah. She sent one up, she sent an email this week, but.
Oh, yeah.
There was no attachment.
Oh.
Sent it like right shortly before the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Four-ish, I get, I don't know.
I don't, you know, I didn't look at my emails. So.
Get it next week.
I'm sorry.
Catch that next meeting then.
Yes, if anybody has anything they want to say.
In her email, she also recommended the vehicle towing thing.
Hmm.
That's in there. I mean, the packet she sent to the email is printed in this packet.
Yeah. Her email today, she hasn't heard any feedback from Knox County yet, so she recommended we wait.
Right. Oh, okay, that was in the email. I, like I said, I didn't look at my emails. Um. Crazy. Um, yeah, we want to make sure that we do that correctly. Um. Okay, yeah. So Public Works is, um, okay, D, seven D, Sea Level Rise and Climate Committee.
It's Linell.
Mm-hmm, Linell.
Hi there.
Hi, Linell.
Whoa, I'm doing technical stuff, which is, you know, not working. Hang on. This is going to work. Gabe, 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 Gabe is going to make it work. I'm going to make it work.
It's all.
There we go. Can you see my screen?
You're a pro, Linell.
Yeah.
It looks great.
Don't get carried away there. I think most of you know me. I'm Linell Mather. I have been a member of the Sea Level Rise and Climate Committee since it was established in two thousand and sixteen. And we just want to give you a brief update on what we've been up to since Molly Miller last reported two months ago. Um, the first thing on our little list here is the crib wave attenuator at the ferry, which I'm going to point, I'm going to turn things back to Gabe because she knows about this and I don't.
Yeah, I think everyone knows that we did apply for the Coastal Community Shore and Harbor Planning Grant for this. Um, it did require a little bit of match that Marjorie and I spoke about, um, in terms of, um, where that would come from. It looks like there's some money in the harbor reserve that could match that. But what this would do, if we get funded, is, uh, just look at that, the current, um, condition of the crib work wave attenuator and explore through, um, you know, po- and design, like, design a solution um, that would help maximize more tie-up space there. Um, I mentioned last time, possible exploration of that, you know, that conversation around emergency vessel to docking space. Um, that project that Ryan is, is or has been involved with. Um, and also, um, just the fact that that, based on previous studies, like that reconstruction of that wave attenuator in order to, to protect the harbor, that side of the harbor, uh, more, it would need to be elevated and, uh, I think just, um, strengthened a bit. At least that's the, you know, the result of the previous study. So anyway, we should know about that within a month or so if we got that grant. And, and the idea would be that, um, if the study for, or the, the preliminary, uh, work that would get done through the grant would be done by December, which would then, if the town was interested in actually pursuing that construction project, we could actually put in for a grant, um, in like January or February, um, to move forward with that. You know, or we can, or we can wait depending on where the town is at and what you want to do. We just know that that piece of infrastructure, um, is in need of repair. And, um, so that's why we're, we're doing this, just so we can be ready to move forward with some type of construction project. So that's what I got.
Thanks, Gabe. Um, just a reminder that our, our weather monitoring station, vinylhavenweather.com is up and running. It's down at the ferry, uh, electronic weather and sea level monitoring station at the ferry dock with another location at the airport. Uh, station's data is stored long-term and publicly available to any interested party at vinylhavenweather.com. It's pretty cool. There's two cameras looking in both directions from the ferry, so you can sort of look, see the waves. You can see the fog, um, and with huge thanks to Matt Ball and Craig Jewell, who've gotten this up and running and are maintaining it. We're partnering with Fox Island Electric Co-op on a LED streetlight project, which will be LED, uh, Dark Sky approved. The project will begin rollout over the next few months. Uh, Fox Island Electric is currently assisting with an audit of the GIS mapping of vinylhaven streetlights, which it turns out we didn't have. So we'll know where all our lights are, where they're needed, how bright they need to be. And I think there's been some stuff in the wind recently about a new, um, what's the word I want, you know, pricing structure for these LED lights. So that's pretty exciting. Um, we recently participated in a program called Climate Change Ambassadors, which was a partnership with the North Haven Climate Working Group. Uh, program, the program was offered by Climate to Thrive, which is based in Bar Harbor. It provided us with tools that can be shared, shared, shared with the community, ranging from information about climate change and resources about energy efficiency and electrification. Uh, whoops, sorry, Gabe and I, Margaret Quahle, Yvonne Thomas, Kathy Island, Maisie Richards, and Molly Miller from Vinyl Haven attended, and about four to five people from North Haven. And it was facilitated by, uh, Island Fellows Brianna Cunliffe and Claire Oxford. So I think that's everything I have. Here's a list of your awesome Sea Level Rise and Climate Committee members. Um, we're always available for questions. We have our meetings, uh, the third Tuesday of every month and we'd love to see any of you at those. Any questions?
All set.
Super. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Linell.
Thanks.
Thanks, Linell. Okay. Eight O Business, the main contract review and questions.
So, um, now I think that you all have a copy of the old, um, contract and the new contract. They are extremely similar. Uh, this is a, uh, five-year commitment. Um, I don't know of any alternatives. Did anybody have a, you know, did you have a chance to read it through and do you have any questions? I mean, this expires in September, so we still have time, but is there anything that you want me to do related to this contract?
No, I mean, that's pretty much place to go, people we work with and. Not surprised the price went up, but.
We had to expect that. Yeah, we had to expect that.
Is this something that, um, is this contract something that the selectman would prefer to sign? Or do you want to authorize me to sign at the appropriate time?
Yes, please authorize you to.
Uh, that would be, you'd have to make a motion to do that.
Guys, all in favor of that motion? If I should have Marjorie sign?
Sold.
Second.
All in favor. Thank you. Eight B, Airport Survey.
Um, so you had asked me to get a quote, uh, for a new survey and the, if that, um, um. These are the same people that did, just recently did the survey over at, uh, Armbrist Hill. It was six thousand five hundred.
It's actually less than I thought it was going to be.
A new one?
For the airport survey.
Sixty-five hundred?
Yes.
F three.
Less than what I thought.
Yeah, much less.
And would you like to move forward with that then?
Yeah.
See, why not? Okay. Nine, New Business, A, uh, Knox County Monthly Report. Knox County Sheriff's Office Monthly Report, excuse me. Any questions on that?
Any activity, that's a good thing.
Yeah, they're busy.
Uh, Peter was going to be here tonight, but he was unable to attend.
Right.
I think they've both put a pretty damn good job, what I've seen.
People seem happy. I mean, I, I don't, I haven't gotten any complaints. I'll put it, I'll just put it that way.
That's very positive, I think. No news, good news.
Usually.
And are, are they happy? They seem to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they are.
Good.
I did, uh, sign the lease with the. Um.
Medical center?
The med- I'm sorry, yeah. Island Community Medical Services for that apartment, but that's only going to be good through the end of November.
Mm.
So I don't know if we want to just keep advertising for something after that date.
I think we need to proactively.
Do you, um. If they don't need it, they'll, they would extend it if we couldn't find another place.
Is that what she said to you?
No, no, I, I'm asking, that's a question, I'm sorry. If they, if we can't find a place and they don't have anybody that needs to go in there, will they, um, renew that?
Question, but I can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just in case. I mean, we still should need to look, but in the event that something doesn't happen, then.
Okay.
Sooner or later, we're going to be faced with it, I'm afraid, unless in fact, some other development happens.
Hmm.
The other thing, should I continue with, uh, the Knox County Sheriff's Office questions? Or do you want to just do that during my report?
We can do it, maybe. Whatever, whatever you want to do, Marjorie.
Later.
That's fine. Well, I mean, whatever is, is up to you, whatever you want to do.
Paul Pinkham sent me an email that I didn't quite understand. Um, he wanted to know if the town wants to go forward with the town requested overtime, which consists of sixteen hours per week in the winter and twenty-four in the summer. And I don't know anything about it. I wrote back to him and I said, I know, I know nothing of this. I mean, why would we, I said, why would we need overtime if we have two full-time deputies?
Right.
And he said it was something that was requested in, during the previous administration with Andy Door and, and previous selectmen. So I really don't know anything about it. And I said, do you want me to ask the selectman? He said, if you don't mind, so.
Do we need it?
I wonder if it's because we only have one deputy when Andy was here.
Yeah.
I bet that's why.
Do you recall this?
What was the, um, uh, exact overtime thing again?
Which consists of sixteen hours per week in the winter and twenty-four hours in the summer.
Yeah, I don't.
What do you clarification?
I don't recall, but to me, if, to me, if we've got two deputies, yeah, we don't need to have that.
Shouldn't be needed, but, you know, overtime is one of those things, if, if you're de- if you got one deputy out on vacation or off island for training, well, that's stuff that's going to happen, but I don't. Scheduled overtime at that level doesn't really sound like something that's necessary.
Right.
If it was.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't.
We just kept it Paul, uh, uh, you know, idea what is, where he's coming from and does he think it's necessary?
I don't. He, his premise was that it was as requested by the town.
Yeah.
But that was the previous administration, correct?
Right.
So I would say that.
They're saying nothing less needed. I mean, if, there's obviously going to be times when overtime is needed.
For instance, during an emergency.
During an emergency, Fourth of July, certain events, when, when you have one officer on the island because the other one's off for training, whatever the, whatever the circumstances may be, there's.
But we're not requesting.
But we're not.
No.
Okay.
No, if they have to have overtime, that's one thing, but we're not going to have a set amount.
Right.
I agree.
Kind of cool. Set up for.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, that's, you're okay. Thanks. Um, B, Dire Island Bridge Association Request.
So, um, Mark Rockman came in a few weeks ago and said that they had formed an organization so that they could move forward to getting Dire Island Bridge repaired. They call it a Dire Island Bridge Association, and he said that they needed, um. Let's see, we request that the town execute a recordable deed in accordance with main title standards conveying to the organization any interest of the town in the Dire Island Bridge. So, you know, I can't remember the total conversation that we had, but I was specific about, well, I think I would have to contact the town attorney to ask about this because, number one, I'm not really sure if we need to, since we don't, we don't have any interest in, um, years ago, like back in two thousand and nine, I think it was. Um, the residents of Dyer's Island tried to get the town to take control or of the maintenance and, and it was voted down at a town meeting. And at the time, I talked to an attorney and they said, you know, if you haven't maintained that bridge for more than twenty years, then it's simply, um, discontinued by abandonment, you know, there's just, there's, so. I guess I, what I'm saying is that I would have to contact an attorney to, to see if there was.
How, how to do it or if we even need to.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable just doing a quick, like, Gabe.
Well, I agree. At a public approach on Dyer's Island or is it all private?
It's all private. We plow up to the. It's all private. We plow up to the bridge. And then the rest is all private.
They won't have it. We, I mean, from what I've read, we have, the town abandoned them, abandoned it. Or, or washed their hands of the bridge years and years and years ago.
That's what my research tells me.
Yeah, check with the attorney, I think. I agree.
Well, I just, it's so expensive, I'm sorry Pam, it's just so expensive. That I just wanted to make sure that it was okay if I called them and got some advice on this.
It says there are no known recorded deeds, deeds or easements from the town. Conveying its interests in the bridge. From eighteen seventy-five.
Oh, and that was the other thing. He wanted me to put it on the annual town meeting warrant for a vote.
It's just too late now.
And um. It was just too late for me to get a, I mean, we were, when I got this, we were about to sign the final warrant.
Yeah, this was Monday, we were signing it Tuesday.
I don't have a problem with you checking with the attorney to make sure, see, to get guidance.
Yeah, just to get the answer.
Okay, thank you.
C Main Street I-beam Structure Analysis.
Uh, this is an interesting issue that, that we've been talking about for the last couple of months. Um. I think the, one of the bridge, yeah, it was one of the bridge inspectors for the state. Gave. Uh. I think they gave Phil the report initially, and it showed that this I-beam. Um, that is. If you can imagine, so there's the, the Main Street Bridge that is maintained by DOT. And then it's just adjacent to the front of the Tidewater.
Right.
Tidewater has a, about what, eighteen inches of sidewalk, maybe. Maybe wider than that. And then there's a span in between where the, the concrete for the bridge stops. And that, that little sidewalk starts. We think that that's where the I-beam is. So the reason that the town is involved in this conversation is that. We need to open that up during the downtown project and. One of the water pipes that needs to be replaced is right there, right next to the I-beam. So. Um, this bridge person um. Said that we really need to have some sort of analysis and uh. A structural analysis to see, you know. What really needs to be done. And then the other part of it is, well, what is the town's responsibility? And I think it kind of, it behooves the town to be involved, cause obviously. It. It's so, you know, it's, I guess the debate is who owns what?
Right.
You know? But nevertheless, we're gonna be opening that road, we're gonna be replacing that water pipe. And my question to the select board is. Would you be interested in cost sharing with the Tidewater on this analysis? Of the substructure. Um. That's, you know, the bridge and that I-beam and then the Tidewater. You know?
What are the consequences if it fails? Because of the water pipe though?
That's what we wanna know.
If there's a consequence like that, I think we'd have to do something.
Well, that's, I mean, to your question, that's what we wanna know.
Right.
I mean, what is, what is going to happen? What are the chances of failure? If it does fail, then.
Consequences.
Yes.
What's the cost of replacing it while, while we have things torn up versus the cost of waiting?
Thank you, Tom. Exactly.
That, that type of thing. Fifty-five hundred I saw on there was.
No, the estimate that I have is five thousand.
Okay. That's the same analysis?
Yes, that's for.
Now, now, the replacement.
Just.
No, this is for the substructure inspection and analysis.
I mean, if the road is gonna be ripped up anyway. Why not? Look at it. See what kind of shape it's in and make a determination.
Mm-hmm.
Cause there's no sense to put anything new under there if this thing's just gonna let go and.
Well, and here's another thought, if we're gonna have it torn up. Anyway. Why don't we just? Get it, figure out the cost of having it replaced, whether or not, whether analyzing whether it's worth. Watchman five grand to decide whether it's bad or not, why not just?
So of the five thousand, one of the conversations we've had is, well, what percentage would the town be willing to? Contribute to that cost and so, I mean, we understand that it's. Do, Maine DOT says that it's on the Tidewater's property. Even all of us, you know, downtown project and the town engineer. And Phil, we're, we're not a hundred percent clear on its location and condition, so. But we do feel it's important. To deal with it, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So, yeah, how much percentage-wise would you be willing to contribute?
How much is the Tidewater looking for?
Heck, I didn't really get an answer out of. I thought Phil was gonna be here.
Is it possible to get an estimate what that would cost to replace that? Right up front, and that would, might help the analysis.
Well, that's one thing that we're trying to find out.
Yeah.
With this, to how much it would cost.
Yeah, that's what the analysis is for, to find out.
One of the things.
It is, okay, to kind of cover that as well as determine the, the condition. Okay. I, I guess the question we would. If the Maine DOT sees that it's on private property.
Hmm.
And. So we've got a private business owner looking for the town to assist. And dealing with something that's on his pro, on their property. It is, it's very similar to the COVID issue we had.
Just thinking that.
But the, I thought. I thought they weren't certain who put it there.
As I said, I'm not.
That's the whole thing, but nobody knows where this I-beam came from.
Yeah.
And, you know, whether it's.
But if it's a real risk to our fundamental infrastructure. It becomes a no-brainer. Maybe it loses us to be involved in.
We're gonna have to probably be involved anyway, regardless, because it's gonna be part of the project to. You know?
I don't think we have a choice. So I, I guess. See what Phil would like us to interview, see what Phil. And we'll look at it again.
Was this the total, Madri, is five thousand then, you think?
That, that's the estimate that they gave to Phil Crossman.
So it would be twenty-five hundred dollars if we cost share?
If we split.
Yes.
But maybe he's only looking for sixty-four, I don't.
What's that?
What's he looking for? Is he looking for?
Well, Madri's gonna have to.
Right, that's what.
But to me, if it was.
It's a difficult situation, but, I mean, I've talked to attorneys about this subject before in terms of a public-private. Purpose. I mean, there are. Things. That. Yes, you could argue that they're private property, but they serve a public purpose. Um.
I understand, if there's a danger to the water pipe. We've got, we gotta, we do have a. And, and it's a danger to the structural of Main Street. Potential, potentially, the analysis will tell us.
Right, in that area, yeah.
Yeah.
Get the, get the best deal you can, move forward.
Well, hopefully, yeah, you can talk to Phil and show him what's going on. Okay, um. Nine D, we're gonna move to the next meeting. Okay. And so Peter and Millie can be. Be able to talk about that, so let's discuss it. Like to get that done ASAP, let's hope and tonight we can. Get it. Passed, but I think we're best to talk to Peter. Find out.
So anybody have a, having read it, does anybody have any captions to it?
Well. We've had several meetings and. Millie made up, you know, we asked her to get the, um, you know, get the purpose, get the. This made up, procedure made up and asked um, Peter to make sure with his superiors that what we have proposed. Won't be anything that is illegal or.
Right.
Right, but apparently he. According to Millie today, she told me that. Peter had talked to them and, and everything looked good, but still, we should talk to him personally when he gets, comes to the meeting, so. Hopefully the next meeting, he can be here. Yeah, there's been a few. Fires and whatnot that might have to be impounded. So. Okay, is that it for? Yeah. Yeah, except for Madri's report. Nobody has any?
I gave you a budget report. I think everything looks good.
Looks very good.
Yeah, we're at overall eighty-eight point five percent, but even departmentally. Uh, I don't see any issues, of course. This is as of June sixth, but that's pretty close to the year end, which is six thirty.
Right.
Very good, Madri.
I think we're good.
Yeah.
Um. Uh. I was having conversations with our assessor, you know, looking at trying to do some estimates uh, on the. Tax rate calculation. It looks. The estimate that we came up with here, and we're not finished getting um, all of the new value. In other words, every year he goes to everybody that had a building permit or anybody that we know. Uh, new houses, obviously. Um. And he has, he has added some value here. We're looking at maybe. Uh, twelve dollars and eighty cents per thousand and right now it's at twelve dollars and thirty cents, but this is. When we did this, it's got a hundred thousand dollars overlay, and we usually don't have that high of an overlay. So. I don't know where the tax rate's gonna end up, and you never really know until after town meeting.
Right.
So. Uh, I just wanted to tell you that Travis and I have been working on that and. There's still some variables that we don't know, but um, that's what it's looking like.
Hope so.
Yeah. Um. Just to let you know, this came up today, uh, we haven't finalized it yet, but um, apparently. Uh, a few years ago, um, ICMS got a grant to buy a um. Oh, I don't know what it's called now, um, I'm sorry. It's a. Machine that does CPR, I'm sorry, it's a CPR machine so that a person doesn't have to do the. Um. Compressions. So they got a grant to buy this piece of equipment, but it's been sitting at ICMS for a few years now. And um, Ryan and Dinah have been having conversations. And we're just developing a simple MOU. The annual maintenance is about um, fifteen hundred dollars, so for us, it would, half of that would be seven hundred. And I think well worth it. So I just wanted you to know that Ryan and uh, Dinah are developing just a simple MOU that we're gonna share. This cost. Uh, and, and actually use this piece of equipment and keep it on the ambulance. But I just wanted to let you know because it is a, a cost share thing, but this just kinda came in today. Um, so I have, so for this year in leases, we're gonna renew the um. Earl Hamilton lease and then the one at the old fire hall, is that okay? Just to go ahead and renew those?
Mm-hmm.
Familiar?
I'm not familiar with either one, but I don't see any, I can't imagine reaching out to.
Well, we've, for years, we've um. Leased Earl Hamilton's land so that people can walk through there.
Yep.
And it's a little more restricted now than it used to be, but that's fine, no, no complaints. He's still allowing people to walk through there for a good part of the year. But we always uh, have an agreement with him that's uh, in writing.
I use it off of my dog, so.
Yeah, a lot of people do. And um, we rent the upstairs of the old fire hall. You want me to continue with those leases? Okay. Just wanna make sure. And you all know about the election. And we had one foreclosure with the sewer, uh, lane foreclosures that I sent out, the notices. I am working with this person on maybe getting some help through the main housing. Um. There's a housing assistance program that uh, helped two, I, people that I know of out here and. You know, he's got a, a significant balance, um. Anyway, I'm trying to help him go through some, uh, an agency to get some help and. We'll see what happens, but the town did foreclose on that piece of property. Anyway. I think that's all I have. I think that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well. Eleven, Report of Members. Anybody have anything?
Yes, I have something. Um. I, was it last year? No, I think Jake, Jake and GW were still on, so it must have been a couple of years ago. Um. We had someone talk to us about a moratorium for aquaculture. And at the time, we decided not to do anything. About it. I think we need to re-look at that. I think.
For any particular reason?
I just think with. The way the offshore wind, windmill project is going and. I just feel like the island should really have some say. Some kind of. Guidelines for people who wanna buy thousands of acres of ocean to do whatever with. That could be overseas companies and we'd have no authority. Um. I can't remember the woman's name, but she said it.
I still have the material.
It's happening down east and. You know, so they came up with a moratorium and I just think we should re- revisit it.
Not a bad idea. At least to look at. And understand the potential.
There's not a lot of applications in, in um. In Oxcope, I dealt with it a lot in um, Casco Bay and Chabig. And um.
That doesn't mean there won't be.
Right.
I, I don't disagree. Um, but the applications do have to go to um, Department of Marine Resources. And the towns, towns do have some recourse. And um, there's always a scoping session for any aquaculture lease. And then there's a um, a public hearing. And you can participate in those public hearings if you want, or you don't have to as a town. Um. Now, I think the complaint that a lot of towns have is that. Uh, the Department of Marine Resources has their own rules, you know, that they have to go by. And if, if an application comes in and it's compliant with their rules. Then they're probably going to approve it.
Almost all of it, too.
Right, so unless you have a, as a municipality, if you have a good reason why you oppose it. That this is a, an area where the, it, with a, a lot of lobster fishing and you can prove that.
Current activity or.
Uh, that there's current activity there, or if it's a, a travel, you know, it's a, it's a, a lane that people travel. Yes. Um, so there is a process, I just wanted to mention um, that. It's not entirely true that we can't do anything, that a municipality can't do anything. We were six, Chabig was successful in um. One application being denied. So it, I mean, it's not impossible. I just wanted to mention that as history and context. But um, if you want me to bring that information back to the board, I, I have all of that.
I just recall the moratorium was problematic, and that was one reason that we've decided not to. Sign on to that.
Point time.
It was.
And I mean, it didn't have to be word for word what they're. Cause they gave us, they given us the example of what they're said. I just think it's something we should revisit. I mean, it can't hurt to talk about it. Um. I mean, to, to me, the offshore wind is gonna ruin the ocean bottom.
But what does that have to do with aquaculture?
Well, it. If somebody wants to come and put a salmon farm on Vinyl Haven.
Mm-hmm.
It's gonna kill the bottom.
Currently, we have no say.
Right, and currently we have no. Other than what you.
Meeting where you just described.
Right. I, I just think it can't hurt to revisit it.
I'll bring that information back. I'll bring that information back or.
What's the, what's the uh, state of Maine has that would cover that too, cause I don't have a clue what they, what they, what process they go through.
For.
For this, these permits for a salmon farm or whatever.
Well, there's, there's three different kinds of permits, there's a limited pers- purpose application, there's an experimental application. And then there's a standard, I think it's called a standard lease. And you start out with, usually people start out with the LPA, it's cause they're only good for one year. Some people start out with an experimental, but they all. As soon as an application goes to Department of Marine Resources, which is a state agency. Then the town gets notice, okay, someone so submitted an application. And they submit a questionnaire to um, the town and especially to the harbor master. Okay, what's going on out there in this particular space where this person is applying for an aquaculture permit? What already happens there? And that's usually filled out by the harbor master or in conjunction with the town administrator. Um, and then that application just goes through the various processes and. The, one of the first things is what is called a scoping session and that means that there's a, a meeting in the, within the town. And people in that town get to come and listen to the person that's applying for the lease. And ask questions of that person, you know, and in, they have to say in their lease what they're gonna do, whether it's. Um, kelp or oysters, you know, salmon, whatever it is. So there is an opportunity to ask questions there and then it proceeds, um. And there is uh, also a public hearing that happens uh, to- toward the end of the process. But, again, one of the problems that we saw in Chabig is that, um. Even after we went through all of these processes and participated in every step and. Said, no, we would prefer not to have this aquaculture here in these waters. DMR still gave the license because they didn't think that, well, just to put it bluntly, they didn't think that our excuse was good enough. And the applicant followed all of their rules, so they still got the lease.
And it really is to put upon the town, the, the town has to defend why.
Exactly.
They don't want, they have to prove.
Right, you can't just say we don't want it.
Right.
Yeah.
Where, if they go through all the, the, the correct steps, I just think we, it's something we need to revisit.
One of the things we might be able to do though, is right during the hat of when fishing is at strongest. Somehow get some pictures of the bays around here with all the lobster traps in it and say, okay, here's the evidence, don't send it in all.
Oh, they, they send divers, DMR sends divers. And they dive on the um. Area that, of the application.
But I meant we could, there are times when we can show a lot of lobster traps in an area, another time we could buy the buoy on the surface, yes.
I understand that, but they, they actually send divers and look on the bottom.
If you go, if you look, you can see all the um, licenses that have been awarded, I mean, there's. Skinny milling. If you go, if you go on the. If you go on the website and you wanna see exactly who has them and where they are. It's quite a list, it's pretty amazing, but it's all, um, kelp, uh, oysters. Um.
Do they do mussels?
Mussels, yeah, yeah, mostly kelp, but.
Either way, it's something, if you have information, definitely let's see it.
Okay.
Look at it.
Happy to bring it.
Before my time. I feel like the pictures show all the lobster traps.
I, I can't foresee a big salmon farm on our shores because we don't have the. You know, we've got so many, it's not really a protected place for those. If, and another thing, Madge, you said if it's near conservation, uh, land that's in conservation easement. They took that into consideration for what, uh, on Chabig, right?
The one that was denied on Chabig was, um, we, the town owned a piece of, owns a piece of property. And they were considering develop- developing it for a new, um. How, uh, a place for the ferry to come in, uh, a new, what would you call it, a new dock, you know? And we had just paid a lot of money to an engineer to, um, to do a study, so. What we said to DMR, we said, look, if, if this aquaculture lease goes through, then we'll ne- we're never gonna be able to. Uh, develop this property the way that we want and see, here's our study that we just did, so. They took that and said, okay, we will deny this lease, so. That was the way, it was, it wasn't a piece of conserved land necessarily, so, um.
There's potential public use of that piece of water already.
Yes, so I'm not sure if it's adjacent to conserve lands, if that's, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Anyway.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a couple of things that I, uh, that I've been talking to. Chief about, and they had a concern about traffic signs out here and they are not sure that. When we went down to twenty, these be- beater besides the twenty, whether then they've been approved by the state. And I asked him, the way for, for them to determine whether or not, cause it, right now, they're concerned if they give someone a ticket. Then it would just tossed aside, if in fact they have not been approved by the state.
I know Andy drove with somebody, I, only thing I recall is, and I don't know who he was with. But he put, he in this, Andy thought the board wanted twenty miles an hour all over town. And no, that he, I don't know what got, what happened, but that was not what we had asked for, we had asked for. Twenty mile an hour speed limit from like the bandstand through town.
Makes sense.
To, you know, to the other end of Main Street, like by the fire station. We did not request every road in town to be at twenty miles an hour, that, so I don't know what. Why he thought that, but that's what they did.
Yeah.
And that was a lo- quite a while ago, but nobody pays attention to them anyway, so.
But if they, if they do stop to do a traffic stop, so they need to know what, what, what is legal, what isn't legal. And I think that's what Cook and Company will probably doing. Now making sure that we have, that we have oxygen for the twenty mile an hour speed limits.
What are they doing?
He was gonna, I don't know what he was, no, we, we talked about it and I think he was moving forward, just take a look, make sure that. We didn't back have this on record and approved by the state.
I don't think we did, I talked to David Allen, who used to do the traffic for the state, I mean, yeah. For main DOT, he's got a different position now, and I asked him that question. If our speed limits were approved by DOT and he said he didn't think so.
Yeah, they really should be.
So I don't know who he was with when the, when that took place, I don't.
I just think it's worth checking to make sure we're, we're okay on, the other one that I wanted to bring up. Is the no parking areas, I saw it the other day down in front of the sandbar where someone pulled up. Other state people, they, they don't. First of all, I'm not sure they understand what the lines mean, they mean different things, not different states. So I'm not sure that putting the cross lines. Especially if you can't see him, are gonna stop someone, so I think we ought to, you know, seriously consider putting some no parking signs up. In critical areas where we don't want people to park. So they can be ignored. Yeah, well, I think, well, yeah, but at least.
If you have spr- uh, yellow lines and, and it says no parking. Painted on those, that's pretty good indication that you shouldn't.
Fire lane or something.
Yeah.
Isn't that what Lucas is gonna?
They're gonna strike, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I can't remember the day that Millie said they're due to come out.
But I'm, you know, I saw something the other day, they were, they were out of, out of state people, they didn't have a clue that they couldn't pack that.
Happens all summer long, not just there.
It's every day, all day.
Doing U-turns in the middle of Main Street. Parking on the other side of the, the, of Main Street by the Eagle, parking there.
Standing in the middle of Main.
Standing in the middle of Main Street, taking pictures of, yeah. Pictures never ends.
For time, so.
Okay.
Consideration is all I'm saying.
Yeah, no, that's fine, Tom, you got any, have anything? You'd like to go, you'd like to go to number twelve?
Cause I like to go to marching practice.
So moved.
Six o'clock. Okay, all in favor?
I don't, I don't really wanna go to grand practice.
No, but you have.
But we know you can't wait.
Congratulations.